I'll call this meeting to order of the International Falls City Council. It's 5:30 on September 15th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge.
I'd like to be just to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice drawn.
There is an absence this evening with Councillor Holden. At this time, I would like to hold a brief moment of silence for all the victims and their families of recent politically motivated events. Thank you. We have an agenda to approve this evening. First, is there any additions? I would suggest some deletions that could be moved back to committee. Items four, five, and six until there is more understanding amongst the council. And as we work through what is proving to be a bit of a difficult budget season once again. Is there any other deletions for the agenda this evening? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Please, Councillor Wagner.
Where do you want to move them to? Committee of the whole or back to?
Committee of the whole would be, would be fine.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor.
Approve the changes.
Thank you, Councillor Wagner.
I'll second.
Councillor Kaler, is there discussion this evening on the agenda as presented with the three deletions? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, agenda is approved unanimously, which it has to be, thank you. Next approval of minutes, would ask for one motion in a minute. First, minutes of the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, regular city council meeting. Second, minutes of the Monday, September 8th, 2025, committee of the whole meeting is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So move.
By Councillor Buller?
I'll second.
And Councillor Kaler, thank you. Is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, minutes are approved, thank you. Payments of claims and approval of accounts payable this evening. First, we have transfers. To fund 401 permanent improvement from 601 and 603 water and sewer, $33,333.33 each. To fund 403 reserved for capital outlay from fund 601 water, And from fund number 603 sewer, $12,500 for total transfers of $95,833.33. Next, to accounts payable, City of International Falls claims, $641,035.32. And Falls Public Library Board claims, $4,908.67. For total accounts payable and claims of $645,943.99. Is there a motion to approve payments of claims and transfers?
So move.
By Councillor Wagner, thank you.
Second.
By Councillor Buller with second? Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, payments and claims transfers are approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, the floor is open for anyone in the chambers this evening to address the council. Name and address for the record and please limit to five minutes. And please, I would ask if there is someone available other than me to keep time, that would be great. Good evening.
Good evening. Tyler, we're at 1201 Second Avenue East. So I'd like to start off by saying, I work for the Cooching County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer, E-911 dispatcher. I'm not here representing the county or the sheriff's office by any means. I'm simply here as a taxpayer for the city. But because where I work, I would say I have some knowledge of things that I think majority of the residents of High Falls don't know. For instance, the city dispatches their own EMS and fire. While the county dispatches the IFPD, the deputies, the EMS and fire progress to the county. So if you call 911 for a medical reason and you live in town, you'll speak to someone at the sheriff's office, like myself. Once the dispatcher gathers all that information, we normally do is we'll put the caller on mute so that we can call over to the fire hall and explain everything that we just got done getting on our 911 call to another dispatcher who will relay that message to the ambulance crew. It ends up being a giant game of telephone and wastes precious seconds. In a medical crisis, every second matters. So what I would like to know is, why is the city paying for an additional dispatch when the county does it already? The county used to dispatch for the Falls ambulance before they went to ALS. Also, how much do we pay for full-time firefighters per year to do the dispatching? Because I guarantee you, it's probably a lot more than what they pay the county, or the county pays for the correctional officer, E-911 dispatcher. We are $2 million in the hole and we need to stop wasteful spending. As a taxpayer, I don't think we need to be paying for two different dispatch groups. Also, I was told something funny by a few different people. And what they've told me is that the city dispatches the fire and EMS because they say the county dispatchers are incompetent. I find that funny because I think the dispatchers at the county do a great job. We dispatch for medical issues out in the county, anything, everything. You call 911, it's coming to the sheriff's office. But what I do find incompetent is when we're $2 million in the hole and you still want to spend more money. And when asked, where are you going to get this money for certain items, we just get crickets. With that being said, wasting money on wages increases. We're in the negative, but yet you're still giving people increases. I'm going to bring up Betty, for instance, she makes the highest amount, I believe, out of the rest of city employees. I'm not exactly sure on the final number, but I think it was like 120, 125,000 approximately a year that you get paid. If you guys were to look at it right now, the governor of Minnesota only makes $127,000 a year. So our city administrator are right behind him. Average population of Minnesota for cities is around 25,000 approximately. With that being said, the average city administrator would get anywhere between 100 to 103,000 a year. Our city administrator makes quite a bit more than that and we're five times lower population than the average in Minnesota. Also, another thing I'd like to bring up is the city's population. Our population's lower than what it's been in the last 70 years, but yet we still have more city employees than we did then. That's all I have to say.
All right, I just wanted to say, you said before, before we had paramedics at the county did the dispatching for the?
Yeah, for BLS, yeah.
It has been the same ever since, even before paramedics. It was, it operated the same way. They called the sheriff's office and then we'd call the fire hall. That has not changed.
From my understanding, I thought we paged out the Falls ambulance.
No, we did not.
Okay, then I was misinformed.
And that's fine, no, I just want everybody to know.
And I, okay, I thank you on that. I was misinformed.
And as far as the population going down in the city and in the colony, seeing as that's the level we're going to use, there's also more employees at the colony with that same decrease.
True.
Certainly, and most importantly, with the sheriff's office.
But this is a city meeting, not a county one.
Yeah, but we're comparing, I just want everybody to know, so we're comparing things, that's all.
Correct.
Thank you, Councillor and Mr. Weir. I don't know that this is the place to discuss it, but it's what I would like to say to everyone here is that the city council's having another budget meeting tomorrow. And some of the things that you've brought up are being discussed. And I don't think that a lot of these issues are going to go away. So that's what I can add, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Bill Valentine, 1504 Fifth Avenue East. Just to expound a little bit on what Tyler just said. He asked a question and I didn't hear an answer, I'd like an answer. Is why when a 911 call goes into the sheriff's department, why does it get to go over to there and then get dispatched? Seems redundant, like he stated, losing some precious time. I'm asking the question, why? I'd like an answer from my council members.
Because that's the way it's set up at this time. And as the mayor said, we're looking into that, right now. Because the one thing the colony doesn't have to do, the colony is a PSAP, they answer the call, and a lot of colonies have a lot of various ways they handle the 911 calls. And one of them is to dispatch or transfer that call to the agency that the call's for. And that's how we do it here, up until now.
Would it make more sense, just throwing it out there, instead of calling the fire department for to dispatch the ambulance, we call the ambulances?
I'm just, you're asked, you asked me a question and I answered.
No, I'm asking the whole city council is, is, it seems like, and then the fire department charging approximately, the number I'm hearing thrown around, 130 grand a year to the city to dispatch the ambulances. Why?
Mr. Valentine, is what I can tell you is the same thing that Mr. Weir, when that key came up. Those discussions have been happening in budget meetings. And the city with the ambulance issue, with the amount of debt we've accumulated, the purchases looming, that we likely don't have the funds to go forward with, or it's negligible to say the best. All of these things are on the, I would say, on the front burner. And I would add that the city has come under pressure in various ways regarding the dispatching of the ambulance service and, quite frankly, how the service is managed. And I haven't had anyone, and I don't, won't speak for the rest of the council, that's come forward with anything. And we're looking for, this ambulance issue is as real as it gets. And so we've had meetings and I'm, my guess is there's going to be big decisions irregardless of what the outcome is, so.
And another point I'd like to make is this is the same council that's been sitting up here for, Pete, how long you been on the city council?
This is my second year, or my third year. I'm going into my part.
What about you, Tim?
Third year.
Walt?
Sixth year. Seventh year.
And this stuff has just gone on and nobody's looked at it prior, prior to now? It's just been business as usual? You guys discussed this in years past, when you seen how far behind we're getting with the ambulance every year?
We did, we discussed it. We had a committee before COVID that met for two years, trying to get some type of taxing district with this county.
I'm not, okay.
And Rainier to try to resolve this, this issue, but that didn't go anywhere.
And, okay, I, I'll accept that answer. Where are we at with the county now? You guys have been in talks with the county as far as the taxing district?
In regard to an ambulance service?
Yes.
Yes, the county last week, and the video is available, I believe, on the KCC TV YouTube channel. Two members of the Cooching County Board met with the Rainier City Council at their committee of the whole, in which they are proposing a taxing district in which the city of Rainier would have to, I believe by resolution or ordinance, opt in to. So that's back on the front burner, but I would, I would add that the problem is real and the decision is going to be real. And I think that it's looming and I'm going to add further that I remember the first, when the taxing district fell apart at the end, the city chose to continue the service. And just like, there's folks here that want money saved, like I do, like anyone else, there's folks here that don't want us to change anything with the ambulance. But I would, again, I'm, we're in the middle of the budget season, there's, I am very confident that things are going to change. Thank you.
Do I know, I didn't hear you answer.
It said the timer of five minutes went off, but others have been speaking, so the mayor, if you want to.
Thank you, I just wanted to talk to you.
I have two different subjects tonight, but I'll keep this one to this. Okay, so I have one que, or two questions actually, that have to do with this. So one of the questions I had asked a while ago was the ambulance not making runs out of town and Mr. Manasseh said that they were short. I can't remember if it was EMTs, they were out on personal business or whatever. And in the main ambulance, I don't remember if it was an emergency meeting or the special meeting about the ambulance, there was a lady here from Roseau, do you remember? I think she was from Roseau or Warroad. And she brought up how much money they had made and International Falls had lost by them coming and picking up and making ambulance transfers. Do you remember? Okay, and she had a lot of ideas how International Falls could make money. Has anybody talked to her? She said she was willing to talk to you guys and give you her, has anybody talked to her?
I have.
Okay, did anything come of that? She seemed to have a lot of ideas and they seem to make a lot of money off of our ambulance transfers.
There was discussion, and first of all, the discussion on the ambulance is ongoing.
Yeah, I understand.
We have a thousand square mile, I believe it's 989 square mile coverage area, so every ambulance situation is different. And I would ask Chief Manasseh this, but I believe with, we're down to four paramedics, we had six.
Right.
When we were running teams of two EMTs and two paramedics, the city taxpayers funded deficits and did every transfer essentially available at our own hospital here in Cook. And I believe wherever else we could pick up transfers at, in which the theory in EMS is what we've been enlightened to as a council is, and I think is what the lady was trying to impress upon us, is that if you're going to have the overhead, you have to pick up every dollar that's available, even if there's a loss.
Because they weren't doing a lot of transfers, we do know that for sure. But my second question is, a comment was made on Facebook that they weren't following through with insurance and getting paid for a lot of those transfers, a lot of the ambulance bills. So is that true, Mr. Manasseh?
There, because that is a rumor that I would like to address that continues to resurface. At some point, there was a billing issue with the ambulance.
Right.
Years ago. And I think that that may be why that keeps coming up.
Jessica Crosby put it on there because she works for United Healthcare, so I'm just wondering if that was part of the not making money issue.
I would say that with the, in discussions with other providers, there's providers that have to staff, like we do, 24 hours a day, fantastic service, that are essentially even at the BLS level, not able to run in the black.
Because we all know that there's people out there that don't pay their bills, right? We all know that. They get a bill and they just don't pay it, right? So then you have to spend the money to send it to collections, we all know that.
And that, excuse me, that's what we have now, you'll see now, we'll have, in our financials, it's hometown billing, it's called, and they get a percentage of what they collect for us. And that's like the lady from Badet. There's a difference between, and I don't know if you got into your conversation, there's a difference between billable hours, right, and getting paid for those. Like they might have all these transfers that, and maybe they're lucky enough that they are, but that's all part of it too.
Because if you don't go after them, they're not going to pay. Okay, just questions.
Thank you.
Colonel Calder, 1901, Sixth Avenue East, International Falls. Just for honesty and transparency, you said you've been on the council two years?
Yeah, I think it is a third year. Then I was on 10 years ago, I believe.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that you've been on the council.
Yeah.
More than two years.
Yeah.
That's important for people to know.
I thought we were talking about, no.
Another question I've been curious about is, the previous city administrator, I don't know the qualifications for a city administrator, but I would imagine that when you took over that there were certain qualifications on your resume that warranted $120,000 or whatever you're getting paid now. Is it possible to see what the resume includes? There's a lot involved in being a city administrator, understanding finance and economics and human relations, human resources, excuse me. So is it possible to, to see what qualifications we require in our city for, for $120,000 a year?
That would have, the first person that the council would need to ask would be the city attorney and our human resources department because of the way those types of things are with hiring and that process. Is that, do you find that appropriate?
It's appropriate, but I would think it's public info, but if it's public information, all you got to do is go ask.
That's a formal request and?
You will need to complete a form, if you could come see me tomorrow, I can get your form and we'll get you.
You have my email, I believe, so.
I can email.
You've just emailed it.
Can you, that's all.
Thank you. At this time, and there is an opportunity again for the audience, open forum at the end of the meeting, or towards the end of the meeting, I'll move to new business first. Number one, to consider a request to use Smokey Bear Park and co-sponsor the Home for the Holidays event with Mrs. Andrea Pastor. Good evening.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Andrea Pastor, I represent Rainy Lake Medical Center. For the past several years, we've co-hosted the Home for the Holidays event with the city. This year's event will happen on Friday, November 28th. We'll have pre-parade activities that will run from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in Smokey Bear, including food trucks, free hot chocolate and cookies, fires, Christmas light displays, some sort of farm animals that we've had that hasn't been solidified yet. And then the parade would begin at 6:00 PM. This year's parade route will line up on Riverside Drive, which is less populated. And then we will start the parade on Ninth Avenue, cut down to Third Street, run through town, and then it will end at the intersection of Third Avenue and Highway 53, turning north so that children that are on floats or whatever can disperse in those public parking lots that wouldn't be used that evening. We would host fireworks immediately following the parade with support of the fire department. And then we would close the road in front of Smokey Bear Park at 3:00 and then have a full closure at 5:00 PM. Do you have any questions for me?
Looking forward to it, but don't want to wish that time of year upon us that quickly.
We've been meeting since August, so.
And thank you for all of your efforts and it's a great event. Is there a motion to approve the request?
So move.
By Councillor Wagner?
Second.
By Councillor Buller? Discussion? Question?
Is there?
Oh, go ahead, please.
Excuse me, have you got your permits for closing the road?
Well, we'll submit the application after approval from the council.
I just wanted to make sure that we, sometimes that's overlooked and not done enough, soon enough ahead of time, so I'm just, okay, thank you.
Yep, I met with the team from the city last week and so everyone's got all of our ducks in a row, and then this was kind of the final step before I submit the application to the state.
We're not going to keep Santa from coming down the road.
Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, the request is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, new business pursuant to the public hearing that we had at 5:00. Consider approval of the special assessment of the cost of improvement for Batumina's paving of Fifth Avenue West between 19th Street and 20th Street. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
This assessment.
Second.
By Councillor Buller. And Wagner, any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, the assessment's approved unanimously, thank you. Item three, adopt a resolution authorizing execution of Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract Number 1060327. Is there a motion to execute this agreement?
So move.
By Councillor Buller.
I'll second.
By Councillor Kaler, is there discussion on the grant? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, item three's carries unanimously, thank you. Item seven, committee of the whole recommendations. A, to approve renewal of 2026 life insurance provider, which is currently Sun Life and would remain at Sun Life, this was discussed, I believe, at committee of the whole. And Sherry, is there anything that you have to add to this, just out of courtesy to you? Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve item A.
I'll move.
Second.
Councillors Kaler and Wagner, discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, item A, number seven, carries unanimously onto item B. Approve T-Mobile for government cradle point, R980 plan for the fire and ambulance department. Chief Manasseh, is this anything you care to discuss? We have discussed it at committee of the whole.
Yeah, unless there's questions.
I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
By Councillor Buller?
Second.
By Councillor Wagner, is there discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, 7B approved unanimously, thank you. Item C, approve 2026 business license, park, recreation and other fees schedule as presented.
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Kaler. Second by Councillor Buller. Is there discussion? Councillor Wagner, did you have any?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. One change that we need to make is on the data request. And there should be a letter there from Attorney Nelson, City Attorney Nelson. So I don't know if we can just leave that one out so we can go back and fix it or what you want, and approve the rest of them?
I would be fine with that.
Or do that, or I can, we can?
So they can move forward with them ones, or those ones? And we had a couple more there, one more maybe, possibly.
Yeah, but, yeah, but we're gonna, I'm, we're going to approve that with the new fee tonight for the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not the way it's printed on.
Right, yeah.
Here. On the fee schedule.
On the fee schedule.
I can, I'll amend my motion to say as much.
Thank you, Councillor Kaler. Are you amendable to that, Councillor Buller, I believe you have a second? Thank you. Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes.
Are you not going to tell anybody what the adjustment was?
The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Item D, approve the first reading of tetrahydrocannabinol product sales ordinance, better known as THC.
I'll move.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. I would like to add on this ordinance, which is thirteen pages. This has been worked on for over a year, I believe.
Yes.
Before I was on the council, so Counselor Wagner and myself now have worked on it with the city attorney, Chelsea Nelson. Betty has worked on it. Lisa has worked on it. This is an ordinance. It requires two readings to approve it. I'm not going to read thirteen pages this evening. If anyone is interested, over and above beyond this evening, there's ample time before it's read again. We would be happy if you request it to provide it to you. Is there any more discussion, Counselor Wagner?
This is very similar to the state, but mirrors the state statutes of how to regulate cannabis sale, so.
And the county.
And the county, yeah, so.
Any more discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, item D is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item E, approve a temporary stop sign on the northwest corner of Fifteenth Avenue and Fifteenth Street during the school year to help facilitate traffic control.
So move.
Thank you, Counselor Buller.
Second.
You, Counselor Wagner. Is there discussion on this topic? Jason, do you have any specifics to add?
I have a guess.
Okay, thank you. Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, item E is approved unanimously. Thank you. Item eight, Senator Grant Hostchild and Representative Roger Scrubba, our senator and representative for their respective districts, have each been selected as League of Minnesota Cities legislators of distinction for twenty-twenty-five. I wanted to make sure that I recognize them as they have both been very eager to deliver for the city and to work with us. So thank you to them.
And I would like to also point out, they're a good example of differing views sometimes, but being able to work together for the best of the area.
Bipartisanship.
Bipartisan, I guess that's the word I was looking for, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Kaler. Item nine, schedule special city council meeting to set twenty-twenty-six preliminary budget and levy. And this is eluding me, I believe the date is September twenty-second or twenty-third?
Twenty-second.
And the time?
That's up to you.
Please.
Is there a chance that we had spoken about the second reading of the cannabis ordinance? In, in order to get it in timeline?
Yeah.
If we could have that second reading at that special meeting on the twenty-second as well?
Yes.
And if that is within the rounds of our, the timing of when ordinances can be passed? And so if we could move it to that date, that would be great.
I would, I would be fine with that. So at this time, we would set the suggested meeting date, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, five-thirty P.M.
Yeah.
For the purpose of the second reading of the cannabis ordinance and to set our preliminary budget and levy number that we send off.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve scheduling this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Buller.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, nine is carried unanimously. Thank you. Item ten, discuss the International Falls ambulance service. For council, Chief Manasa, floor is open.
Has anything changed since our last discussion?
The.
Has it been in meetings?
The last, we discussed this often, not always at city council meetings, sometimes in committee. The last week, there was a committee of the whole meeting in Rainier in which two county board members did approach the city of Rainier about the idea of an ambulance taxing district. The meeting is available on the KCC TV YouTube channel. I would encourage anyone interested in the topic to watch it. That is the best update I have at this time. Is there any other business to come before the council? We will move back at this time. As at the beginning of this meeting, there's an opportunity to address the council in open forum, which is a maximum of five minutes, and name an address for the record, please.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Rhonda Benedict, nine oh nine Sixth Street. All right, I turned this in last time, but I want to read it for the record. This is my complaint against Chelsea Nelson. Um, I turned it in, it was August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, so. Dear sir, I am Rhonda Benedict. I'm providing you this formal complaint concerning misconduct and insubordination by attorney Chelsen, Chelsea Nelson at the July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five special city council meeting and harassment after July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting. Towards the end of the meeting, attorney Nelson publicly scolded you. As her scolding went on, her temper flared and she stated if she was Emma, she wouldn't show up to work the next day. I then piped up from the audience with one word, hey, that's it, one word, in attempt to interrupt her insubordination in front of all the citizens. At that point, you adjourned the meeting. I deported the room and together with the other public attendees, as I was halfway down the steps, I overheard someone say, I need to talk to Rhonda. And then she came out of the room, Rhonda. Attorney Nelson then hollered, Rhonda, I need to talk to you. I said, nope, not interested. As she wedged her way through the crowd towards me, she asked why. And again, I replied, nope, not interested. Attorney Nelson then charged down the steps towards me and I said, no, I don't want to hear it. She continued to holler at me and begun arguing, stating why? Why is it okay for Emma to be interrupted when nobody else was interrupted? I kept walking to leave the building and she kept arguing, stating, maybe I won't show up to work either tomorrow. Although I stated several times that I wasn't interested in speaking with her, she continued to follow me towards the building exit, hollering and arguing with me. I informed the council on July twenty-first, twenty-five city council meeting that I intended to file a formal harassment complaint against attorney Nelson. After that meeting at seven twenty-one P.M., I recite, received a message over messenger app from attorney Nelson attached to this complaint in which she continued arguing and requesting to meet with me in person. If attorney Nelson has anything to say to me, I should be said during a city council meeting where dialogue is part of an official record. If the harassment continues, I intend to, I intend to file complaints with my congressional representatives and the Minnesota State Attorney General Office. Thank you, Rhonda Benedict. Attached is a copy, if you'd like me to read it, I can. Part of her apology that she was trying to say is, if I think I felt, if she thinks I felt that she went after me, I don't know how I can think that when she kept hollering my name and coming after me. Then she says that she thinks that I, that she heard that I may have felt targeted, which again, how did I think that or may have I felt that when she was coming out hollering my name and coming after me when I repeated, no, I'm not interested, no, I'm not interested, no, I don't want to hear it, and she just come, coming after me. So that's my complaint. I turned it in to you, you have it. I just wanted to say it for the public record.
Thank you. We will move on to correspondence. Tomorrow, there is a Highway eleven seventy-one International Falls corridor planning open house at Bacchus Community Center. And that's, is that at ten thirty when?
Five o'clock.
There's two. Is the fir, the first one's for?
Agency.
Okay.
Five o'clock.
Couple of us are going.
Yeah, well.
So tomorrow at five o'clock, and this is looking out towards the reconstruction of Highway eleven seventy-one, much like Highway fifty-three was here a few years ago. There's information in the packet on the Rotary Community Impact Grant Application, which is fairly significant. Like to thank them for the opportunity of sixty thousand dollars for folks that can apply for their organization towards the betterment of the community. There's a public library meeting. Keyword was a public library meeting on September tenth. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, October sixth, twenty-twenty-five, at five-thirty P.M. But I would also, once again, remind that there is a special city council meeting being held September twenty-second of this year, five-thirty P.M., which would constitute agenda items of the preliminary budget and levy and the second reading of the cannabis ordinance. Is there any other discussion or business to come before the council?
Mayor, this is attorney Nelson, and my apology message to Rhonda was grossly misrepresented. If that could be read for the record as well, and if she'd like me to respond, I'm more than happy to do so.
So it would be on the record, I believe, because the meeting is recorded. Thank you, attorney Nelson.
She did not read the apology. She tried to summarize it in a misrepresentation. I did not ask to meet with her again. I said I would be fine meeting with her again. I would also be fine not meeting with her again. And that I didn't realize she may have felt targeted. I didn't try discredit her feelings whatsoever. So I would like that read, and then if Rhonda would like me to respond on the record, I can. Um, because certainly it doesn't appear she's willing to meet with me.
Is, when you mentioned that you would like that read, is that something that you can do? I do not have a copy. I don't think the council has a copy of that here at the meeting.
I could pull it up, but I do believe Ms. Benedict would have a copy. And she did say she would read it.
Chelsea, do you have a copy?
I do, do you want me to pull it up?
Yes, I would ask that you read it.
Okay, I have it up. I said, this was July twenty-first, immediately after that meeting where she made it known that she felt that way. I said, good evening, Rhonda, I want to personally reach out and apologize that you felt I went after you last Monday. To clarify, this is not to deter any report you plan to make as I support your right to do so. I realize you feel very passionately about city affairs and personnel. I also realize you disagree with comments I made about the mayor cutting Ms. Red off, which I respect also. I disagree with the people, with people every day and easily forget not everyone is used to it the way I am. I also understand that wishing to speak with only you, because you're the only one I heard, may have felt targeted. I believe everyone has the right to speak at these meetings as long as decorum is followed. I know you mentioned your ongoing concern with comments from a meeting I was not in attendance at, but I can tell you I'd have stood up for you the same I would anyone else that I witnessed that I believe is being treated unjustly. I have no issue with you meeting in person at whatever location you prefer should you wish to meet with me. Nor do I have an issue, any issue, if you'd prefer not to meet with me. Again, I apologize for not anticipating how being singled out may make you feel and assure you I will be more cognizant of it in the future. Thank you for your time, Chelsea Nelson. I also left the building before Ms. Benedict did. Um, I did not charge after her like she suggests. Um, I just want to make that clear, and I am still sorry for feeling, making Ms. Benedict feel that way. That was never my intention. And certainly I will not approach Ms. Benedict again, but I don't believe in apology letter with harassment.
Thank you, Chelsea. Does that conclude the discussion on that topic, or do you have more at this time?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other business for the council this evening? Meetings adjourned.